Can you hear me? Okay. Is that loud enough? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Karen McBride and I'm gonna be serving as the moderator this evening. On behalf of the Executive Board of Presidents Forum, I want to thank the candidates for being with us tonight. Please note, we received notification that Izzy Imig has resigned as a board director, and she's indicated that she no longer wants to be considered as a candidate for the upcoming election. I would like to take a moment and review the rules with the candidates before we begin. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and one minute to answer each question. You'll be asked to stop when your time is up. The candidates are asked to talk about what they believe, think, or feel, and it's a candidate's job to tell us what they believe in and why they deserve your vote. Just a little bit about the Presidents Forum. We consist of an executive board and board members from each of our Rockwood Schools' PTOs and PTAs. We collected questions for this evening in an anonymous manner from those PTO and PTA members. Thank you for those of you who submitted questions. We'll be using those to guide this evening's event, and questions have been grouped together in order to cover all the topics posed. In addition to our submitted questions, we will again this year have our high school students who are with us tonight ask questions so that their voices can also be heard. After all, you guys are the reason why we are all here. We've asked each of our high schools to pick a student and present questions to the candidates. Each student gathered topics that they felt represented their school community. Thank you to each of them, their teachers, and principals for working together to make this possible. So representing Lafayette High School is Madison Cox. Representing Eureka High School is Caleb Pickens. Representing Marquette High School is Samantha Pers. And representing Rockwood Summit High School is Skylar Holtgrew. Thank you guys for participating tonight. Like I mentioned earlier, I will be the timekeeper for tonight, so I will keep track of the two minutes and one minutes, and I will let you know when your time is up. Also want to note, the Presidents Forum does not support or oppose candidates. Instead, we are here to give all candidates a voice this evening. I want to remind everyone that the purpose of this evening is to learn where each candidate stands on the issues presented so that you can be an educated voter. So we will now begin with opening statements, and we will start with Mara Voracek.
Good evening. I'm so appreciative of the Rockwood PTO Presidents Forum, who are hosting and moderating this forum. Thank you guys, and thank you all for being here. I'd like to share a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Fargo, North Dakota, and completed my bachelor's degree at the University of Texas at Austin. I then went on to Duke University to complete my doctorate in biochemistry as well. My husband was in the military, so when I moved to be with him after graduate school, I moved to Norfolk, Virginia. He was stationed in Virginia Beach, which is nearby. And I decided at that point to try teaching out. My first year, I taught middle school math. Yeah, that was fun. Then they brought me up to the high school to teach chemistry and biology, and I realized I absolutely loved teaching. When my husband got out of the military and we moved to the St. Louis region, I only looked at teaching jobs, and I only really looked at community colleges because I really wanted to make an impact on adult learners. And now, high school as well, because we now have an early college program as well. And just ended up loving the community college setting and realized how passionate I was about public education and the opportunities that it gives students of all ages. The reason why I want to be on the Rockwood School Board is very similar. My kids both go to Rockwood Valley Middle School. They're in eighth grade, look to Lafayette next year. We moved to the Midwest because the public school systems are so much stronger in the Midwest than they are in the East Coast. And when a position opened up with the Rockwood School Board in the spring of last year, I decided to apply for it. It was a replacement position to see more behind the scenes with Rockwood School District, and ending up just loving the experience. So here I am today. Now I am a candidate for the next three-year position, and I'm looking forward to answering your questions tonight.
Thank you, Mara. And now we will go to Sarah Boyer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Boyer. And thank you, PTO Presidents Forum and students, and all of you for being here tonight. My life kind of started a little differently. So I grew up in San Antonio, Texas. That's also where I went to college. I became an elementary school teacher, and then I joined Teach for America, and was moved to St. Louis. And I really, when I was teaching in the general education classroom, I fell in love with special ed. And so I moved into working in special education with Special School District in 2012, and I've been with them ever since. Personally, I have, me and my husband live in Baldwin. We've lived there for 12 years, and we have two daughters. He graduated from Rockwood Schools, so he knew he really wanted to raise our family here. And he convinced me this was the best district. And so far, our daughters have had just amazing experiences. They're three years old and almost seven, seven on Saturday. So their experiences in Rockwood has been amazing, and I want to make sure we're continuing that for them and for all kids. So currently, my role with Special School District is an instructional coach. So I am working with teachers every day. I support new teachers. I mostly support the brand-new teachers, but I also work with veteran teachers. And I help them with their personal growth. I help them with professional development. And I just see the hard work they are putting in every single day. And that's a big reason why I'm sitting here. I also have been able to volunteer with our PTO. I'm a Girl Scout leader. And just seeing how important the community is, I wanted to see how I could do more for my Rockwood community and see if I could help out in any other ways. But so far in my life, I think the best thing I have done is my work as an instructional coach, and just seeing how we can empower teachers to meet the needs of their students. Because really, when we're all working together as a community, we can make such a difference. So I'm hoping that I can help support our teachers, and I want to make sure all our kids know they belong here and have access to the best learning.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to begin our question-and-answer period for the evening. So each candidate will have one minute to present their views on the posed question. And we're going to start this evening with our high school students. So Madison Cox, I'm gonna invite you to come up, and you can ask your questions.
Hi. So I am starting off, I apologize to start off with kind of a harder-hitting one, but in the Rockwood School District, where are some areas you believe that we can improve? And how do you think you can aid in this growth? Oh, sorry.
Perfect. That's fine. One of the things that I know that we need to work on, and I think this is true of all school districts nationwide after the pandemic, is helping the students who really had some learning loss during that year, year and a half, where reading intervention was nearly impossible, some math interventions as well. And you know, that keeps trickling up every year. Those students get one year older. And so I think just continuing to support those kids, especially some of the kids that were really young at that time, because they didn't learn how to do school. The rest of us got to kind of have those formative years where we got to learn to do school. So that's one thing that I'm really passionate about, and I am loving the building-thinking classrooms that many of the teachers have been piloting this year. I think, you know, I've looked into it. My community college they work at, we're actually gonna pilot, we're piloting it right now as well. And I already have three classrooms pegged to expand, just like the whiteboard idea that goes with it. But I'm just really passionate about that, making sure that our students have a really strong foundation. Because when they get to college, we call it Swiss cheese when they pulls in their learning. And we really need to work on that. Other than that, you know, again, community colleges do career tech as well. Rockwood, I know, has been expanding in the career tech areas. I know that we also send students down to South Tech. But I know Eureka is putting together a welding lab, which I think is just awesome because a lot of our employees and business owners in some of our more technical fields, they're retiring. And we need to get some students interested in some of those fields, because they can actually make a lot of money. You have no idea how much plumbers can make. And you know, a lot of plumbers really enjoy their time on the job, and they're often sole proprietors and business owners. And so they get to make their own hours and take on their own projects. So I think for some students, that's a really great choice.
Awesome. Yeah, my dad was a plumber, so I'm always like, yep. Like, it's really sad that I did not go into that, but... So one thing for me, I think that we do need to work on, just working with new teachers and supporting teachers as they're coming into education, is really also that we're facing a teacher shortage. It's a national issue. And so just continuing to look at those ways that we can make sure our staff pay is competitive. And I know we're taking steps towards that, and everyone's aware of that. But I'm excited that there's like a passion in our community to make sure we are compensating our staff, and we want them to stay here. So I'm hoping we can come up with a plan to work as a community to face that teacher shortage and keep our teachers and get new ones, because we need them, just like plumbers. We need people.
Absolutely. Did you just go ahead with the second one? Beautiful. You got it. So for my second question, I wanted to ask what perspective or representation that you think is new that you are going to bring to the Rockwood School Board, and why you think that is important?
I think for me, I mean, the lens I see a lot of the world through is through my special education lens, because that's where I spend my career, and that's my passion. And I think too, when we think about, the great thing about Rockwood is it's never those kids and those kids. They're all our kids. And so, you know, when we're talking about just helping the special ed kids, we're really not. We're helping all the kids. So just having that lens of like, every kid is an individual learner, and how can we make sure we're meeting individual needs in this huge system with almost 20,000 kids? We've got to make sure, you have to find that balance. But I think that would be my big perspective coming in.
My background's math and science, so I am very data-driven, but with a soul, right? Data-driven with a soul. And I like to look at numbers. I like to look at the behind-the-scenes. And the science part of me likes to solve problems and think outside of the box and look for ways that we can innovate in the classroom or innovate within our own systems. So I guess that's kind of the thing that I bring that's a little different. I also, I've been a dean, basically an academic administrator at a college, kind of mid-level, kind of like a building principal for that kind of level. So I know the day-to-day problems that sometimes happen in the classrooms. Sarah and I were just talking about subbing for classes at the last second. And you know, I'll have a teacher have a medical event, and nobody else can take their class. And so today, I'm teaching physics, and tomorrow, I'm teaching psychology. My background's biochemistry. So you know, just those sorts of things, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. And next up, we have Caleb Pickens from Eureka High School. So you can come on up. And we'll just continue to alternate. So whoever answers first will just switch back and forth between each question.
All right. Well, thank you. As Ms. McBride said, my name's Caleb Pickens. I'm a sophomore at Eureka High School. My first question is for Dr. Voracek. As you are a current board member, my question is, the Rockwood School District is behind other St. Louis County districts for staff pay and specifically benefits. Looking at situations in Rockwood currently, the support staff shortage and the negotiations with the NRNA, this is really making this issue visible. What is the board's plan, and specifically, your plan to kind of attack these issues if they occur again?
So despite what it looks like, Rockwood being more of a residential community, we have a lower tax assessment value than a lot of other school districts. You know, somewhere around a billion dollars less than Parkway. And I know that we have 4,000 fewer students, which means we have fewer buildings. We have fewer, you know, teachers and things like that. Or they have fewer teachers and fewer buildings, excuse me. So one of the things that we are looking at is, you know, we can't change our tax assessment values. That's outside of our hands. But what we can do is investigate, looking into increasing the tax levy. I've been knocking on a lot of doors recently, and I don't mind knocking on doors. Let's put it that way. So if the board does decide to move forward with a proposition to increase the taxes, I will be knocking doors. I will be at those meetings so that we can explain to our taxpayers within the community what we need to do.
So yeah, I would say, I mean, a lot of the same thing. You know, just the world of education right now, we're gonna have to be looking at like doing more with less. I mean, we've got a lot of revenue disruptions, a lot of budgets being slashed, and then we have that tax piece as well. So I think we are gonna have to kind of have a fresh look at things, because we've never really been where we are before. But yeah, I think our community is gonna be key. So getting people energized, getting people out there, and getting people just aware of what we're doing so that they know that when we say like, hey, we're gonna look at a tax levy, they know it's because we want the teachers to have that fair pay and to be able to stay in Rockwood.
Thank you very much. My next question, Ms. Boyer, what is your plan for maintaining a visible and available presence for community members while serving your term?
So I think a lot of it is about getting to know everybody in the community. And while you can't have that personal connection with this huge area such as Rockwood, you know, a lot of what I do right now, I cover 21 schools in my role. And I can't go to 21 schools every day or every week. So you know, just having that accessibility, like trying to do as many touchpoints as you can, but also being willing to come to events like this or have a presence. And I know when you're on the board, we have a system for, you know, reaching out and having that communication, but just making sure that we're all keeping communication open and using the tools we have to be available to all of our constituents and be accessible.
I love school events. I love everything from the science fair and robotic events to athletic events. My kids, I'm really excited, are going, like I said, to Lafayette next year, so they're gonna be able to experience all those after-school activities and, you know, go to more athletic events and things like that. Because that's been one thing, you know, middle school, we don't have all those activities. So one of the ways I plan on being present is just going to things and, you know, being involved and being present and identifying myself. Because sometimes, you know, people don't recognize us, which is reasonable. So just, you know, making sure that people know, hey, I'm a board member. I'm here with my kid, but I'm also here if you need to talk to me about something. And so, you know, just being active in the community, I think, is one way you can stay connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. I would now like to introduce Samantha Pers from Marquette High School.
Good evening. I'm Samantha. I'm from the Marquette Messenger. And my first question tonight is, I know we've heard a lot about what changes we want to see in the district, but right now, I'd like to hear where you see Rockwood currently thriving and how you would continue to maintain or even increase that growth as a board member.
I think when you look at our data, and we actually really excel in comparison to other school districts. And the fact that we are so large and are so competitive with some of the smaller school districts that have kind of the same family type, you know, where people are very pro-education. They want their kid to go to university when they graduate, things like that. You know, we, you know, as a very large school district, could lose sight of student success, and we don't. And so many, you know, I was just looking at how many National Merit Scholars that we just had the other day. I think there were 20. I was like, wow. I mean, that is extraordinary that we had 20 in just our school district. And we just keep on being competitive across the board. We had students competing in the science fair at Webster University, and you know, one of them's gonna go to the International Science and Engineering Fair, which I think is next month. That's amazing. I mean, so I think we just, when you start looking at like the Facebook feed, it's just extraordinary, the things that students are doing.
I think too, on the early childhood part, I mean, our parents as teachers as well, it's just amazing. I know I, when I had my first baby, there was a lovely lady named Joan who came to my house and was like, hey, make sure you're doing tummy time. And that's just like a part of Rockwood. And it's amazing that you can have these services from when your kid is six months old to when they are possibly even 21, depending on when they graduate. So it really like encompasses everything a community needs for support. And so I think just keeping things like that going, that help families in more ways than just when the kids are in the school from age to three. It's great.
All right, awesome. Thank you. And then my next question, can you talk to me about what sets you apart from each other? Or something that differentiates you?
I think too, part of my current role is leading professional development for all the teachers in Special School District. And so just from that lens, like seeing the things that teachers need, and I build, we're building programs right now on Canvas so that we can do virtual learning for teachers, and they can access our courses in different ways. And so just having that mindset of helping adult learners so that they can better meet the needs of their student learners, I think would be a good asset on the board, since part of our job is also making sure teachers have what they need to do their jobs.
I'm not afraid to ask questions, sometimes for clarity, but also when I know it's a tough question and someone needs to ask it. So I think that is something, like I'm not afraid to be the person in the room that says, I don't think that that's how we should be looking at that. So I think that might be something that's, I mean, I don't know Sarah very well, so I don't know. She could be very well like that too. But I'm just, I just know that I, my, I guess, my risk-taking part of me tends to drift towards that in terms of asking questions and saying, why are we doing it that way? Have we looked at this? So that might be something that sets me apart.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Samantha. And last, we have Skylar Holtgrew from Rockwood Summit High School. So come on up.
Hi, I'm Skylar from the Talon. My first question is, how much say do you think parents should have in curriculum?
That's a really good question. I get that a lot at the college level, too. I think that our curriculum team is fantastic. In addition, we do invite parents into the conversation when we change the curriculum. So our curriculum's on a cycle. And we invite parents and teachers, an entire team of folks, to regularly look at our curriculum. So I think that they're already there if they choose to be there in that venue. What becomes more difficult is when, in the moment, they question the curriculum, because that sometimes puts our teachers, often some of our newer teachers have to face this, and they don't know what to do. And so I sometimes find myself in situations in my role where I have to help parents understand why we're teaching a certain way in the curriculum and how we're still going to assist that student, who sometimes is a child, through that curriculum. And you just explain why this method is being used or this text is being used. But I just want to make sure everybody knows that parents are actually involved with the curriculum process at Rockwood.
I think too, typically when we have conversations like in an IEP meeting, we usually talk about how teachers are the experts on that curriculum or on the standards, and parents are the experts on their kids. And so just having that teamwork, because teachers can never know a kid as well as a parent or guardian can. And parents are never gonna necessarily, and some of them will, because they might also be teachers, but they might not know the standards or the curriculum as well as that teacher or expert is going to. So just building that relationship and trust so that they can have that conversation of why a curriculum looks the way it does or why they're teaching math the way they're teaching math with, I know, like the vertical whiteboards. I could see some parents being like, that seems weird. And I'm guilty too, when my kid's learning something away I didn't learn it, and I am a teacher. So I think just having that trust and building that trust back up so we can say like, teachers are gonna be those experts. They want the kids to get to their goal, and parents are gonna be the experts of their kids, and we could bring it all together.
Awesome. And my second question is, why are you running for school board again? And what makes you want to serve our community in this capacity?
So I mean, my biggest passion is really just education. And my current role as an instructional coach has really led me to see how vital our teachers are and how much hard work they are putting in, and how much the community can help our schools and how important it is. So I'm here because I think that I will be an asset. I'll be willing to work hard. I'll be a team member. I will, you know, I'll show up and show out every day for the kids. So yeah, that's really the simple reason I'm here.
My answer is quite similar. I am so passionate about the learning process. I just love watching a student, you know, I'm teaching a chemistry lab regularly. That's the actual class I'm assigned to right now. And I had a student that was really struggling last week with chemical nomenclature. And he and I talked through ways he could study after he left his lab and the tutoring services. He came back this past week on Monday, and he was, he had it, right? And he had a test coming up later this week. So I'll check back in with him after spring break. But that is why the teachers are in the room, the support staff are in the room, is we're there to make that student feel secure and then learn. And I think the school board behind the scenes is helping to make sure that that can happen. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. And thank you to all of our high school students for coming tonight. You guys did awesome and had some really good questions. So thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. So now I am going to ask the questions that were submitted by our PTO and PTA members. So we're gonna start off with, in your opinion, what are the key qualities that make a successful school board member? And how do you embody these qualities?
I think that, so first of all, it is a lot of work. I've had to field a couple of questions the last couple of weeks, asking how much I get paid to do this. It's a volunteer job, and it is a lot of work behind the scenes. The board packets are quite long. And you know, it's our job to make sure we are the last look before something gets approved. And so it's actually a pretty hefty responsibility. So I think one of the key components that a board member needs to bring is that time commitment and that understanding of that responsibility, the fiscal responsibility. You're the last person making sure that the personnel that we are hiring are in alignment with the school's philosophy and mission. So I think that, you know, I don't know that I have time to go into a lot of it, but I think it's really just the idea that you're gonna have to work hard at this. And you also have to be a good listener. I think there's a lot that can happen behind the scenes that can either create something amazing or could create chaos if you aren't listening. And so I find that I listen a lot, and I'm learning a lot. And I think that those are probably the two things.
Yeah, I would say listening as well. Just approaching everyone who approaches you with that theory of that they have positive intent coming in, that they are there because they care about their kids. And sometimes it comes across in very different ways when parents have that passion or when community members are passionate about something. But just extending everybody the belief that they are coming with that positive intent and for the good of all kids. And listening and then working as a team with the other board members and coming to that understanding that we're here for Rockwood and we're here to make that good decision. So I think, yeah, just having that teamwork and that belief that everyone's here.
Thank you. Can you share a specific example of a successful initiative or project you have been involved with that demonstrates your ability to make a positive with that demonstrates your ability to make a positive change in education?
That is a big one. Can you repeat it one more time?
Can you share a specific example of a successful initiative or project that you have been involved with that demonstrates your ability to make a positive change in education?
I'll go with my favorite one. I've done, I mean, like there's so many fun things that you do and none of these have been like my own because you work on a team and I cannot take credit for these. But I think my favorite was one of my last years in the classroom. So before COVID, I wrote a grant. The Missouri Retired Teachers Foundation gives grants to teachers. And we did a social skills slash community outreach mashup. So my students, like every month we picked a different community project. So one week or one month we made shoes for, out of blue jeans. And they send them kids in Africa to like protect their feet from getting ringworm. Another month we planted flowers and beautified the school. And so each month we had like a design project that we did around the project we were gonna do and we had to plan it out and we had to create a survey and poll our community members in our school. And it was really fun to watch them like learn and be able to help others because so many of the students hadn't had the opportunity to make toys for dogs at the shelter. And we just did so many fun things with it and just the whole process from writing the grant to getting the supplies to, actually no, now I'm remembering, it was 2020. So I had like, we had just made fleece blankets. So like I started COVID with like 80 fleece blankets in my basement and you couldn't donate them anywhere because COVID, so that was, that's probably my favorite one that comes to mind.
So math success is always a scene, I should say, as a barrier to students, particularly in college. Most degrees require a math course, if not multiple math courses. And so when I became the dean that had math underneath me, I had, I was in a different area of the college before, I was charged with helping our instructors and students increase our student success in math. And so it was a bunch of little things. It was making sure the students were taking the right math. You don't need college algebra if you're not going on to take calculus. We have contemporary math, we have applied math, we have statistics. So getting students on the right sequence of their math was super important. We also started supplemental instruction in our college-level courses and really tied those to the parent course in a way that they'd never been done before. This fall, we ended up having something like 80% success with students in college algebra that were also taking the supplement, whereas semesters prior it was in the 60s. And so for me, what that does, what that helped with was, you know, our completion rates went up, our students graduated, and they were progressing if they needed math towards that terminal math that they needed to take.
Thank you both. Okay. Regarding the Rockwood Board Code of Ethics, what part or parts of the Code of Ethics do you feel are most important to having an effective board and why?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. No, I know it's another big one.
Make sure I got all the pieces.
Regarding the Rockwood Board Code of Ethics, what part or parts of the Code of Ethics do you feel are most important to having an effective board and why?
So I think the main thing for me is just making sure that I help create a safe space for all members of the board to speak so that when we have a tough conversation that might not be unanimous at the end, we've all been able to safely speak about why we feel differently. And then ultimately, all of that needs to stay, you know, if it was not during the open portion of the board meeting, the most important part is that stays closed. We don't leak information from closed session. And that even if I'm on the other side of the vote, that I leave being able to explain what I can about the why, you know, the part that was, that we're able to talk about and show my support for the board's decision overall. So I think that that is extremely important in a board.
And I will be a million percent honest, I do not have the Code of Ethics memorized. Like I got the Girl Scout law, but I'm not gonna go into that. But yeah, I think just having that, it's about this, I feel like I read it and I was like, this is basically, I got it. But yeah, I think just having that commitment to, you know, I'm going to support the decisions of the board if I am a member of the board and do things that further our initiatives and further our mission. So I think just having that commitment and just the honesty of following the rules and the ethics. Yeah.
If faced with the need to recommend budget cuts, where is the first general area you would look to trim spending? I know.
I mean, I do not have numbers in front of me. I think that that would be something that we would lean on, the expertise in the district. From, I know that they're constantly looking at the numbers and numbers are constantly changing in schools and things, kids are not static, so kids change every year. So I think we would have to trust to the district. The district has a record of making really great financial decisions. I think that would be where we would start. Because I certainly, coming into a board not knowing the history of everything, would not feel comfortable like chopping things down, so.
So our budget is about 85% personnel, 15% other, consumables, equipment, you know, everything else. So when you talk about budget cuts, you'd be talking about people. And I would not support any budget cuts without us completing a demographic study, making sure that we've got the right number of teachers, supportive staff and administrators in each building based on the number of students. And I'm actually cannot think of, you know, I'm thinking through all of the board agenda items and these are all open, so they're, we do not spend money on frivolous things in Rockwood School. So I can't really think of anything other than, you know, maybe we don't need that chair this week, but you know, it's, you're not gonna come up with millions of dollars by cutting anything within our supplies or consumables or transportation or anything like that. And frankly, you know, I just think we'd have to find another way.
And this is our last question for the evening, it's a little more lighter. It's common for Board of Education members to have been involved in PTO during their children's years in Rockwood. Have you been involved in PTO during your time in Rockwood? And how would you characterize the role of PTOs in the broader scope of a school's management?
So I've not been involved with the PTO, but my husband was. So my husband was involved at Pond Elementary, he helped with quite a few events. I was unable to do that at the time, but I do volunteer in a lot of other ways. I was a CYC volleyball coach for six years. We just finished our sixth season, so now can hang up that whistle. Because my daughter's in eighth grade. I did help with the Boy Scouts troop and was a den mother for first through fourth grade and then just helped as a volunteer as my son finished out. And also helped with Girl Scouts. I was a camp volunteer. We went camping quite a few times actually at Camp Fiddle Creek. So although I wasn't able to be involved with the PTO, I was still quite involved in other areas of my kids' lives.
Currently I have a first grader, so I joined the PTO when she was in kindergarten. As a, I was able to teach in Rockwood for about eight years through SSD. And I just remember knowing as a teacher, if I needed something, that PTO was gonna be there to support us and there was a way we could contact and get what we needed for our students. And also they were throwing like all the fun parties. Like that was like, the excitement was what the PTO was doing and that was bringing in the community. So my chances to be on the PTO these past couple of years, they are some hardworking people, they're right there. But I mean, the time they spend and just the text chains and the planning and just everything that goes on behind the scenes that kids don't know about and teachers don't necessarily realize how much work they're doing. So I just think, yeah, our PTOs are just vital to our schools and make a huge difference. So, and the teachers do appreciate it so much on their end, so yeah.
All right, so before we get to closing statements, I want to again thank the candidates for coming tonight and taking time away from your families to be here with us, as well as our PTO members that are in attendance tonight, and thank you for all of your hard work. I also want to give a special thank you to the staff at the Annex and for getting everything set up and for hosting our event tonight and to the Rockwood Communications Department, thank you. We're ready to start our closing statements, our closing comments, they're gonna be two minutes each. We will go in the reverse order of what we started, so Sarah will start with you and then Mara will go to you.
So yeah, thank you all again for being here. I was able to do some reflection and learn more about being on a board. On Monday, I went to a training for board membership. And one thing that every single person on the panel there just talked about was the importance of trust and teamwork and just how that is vital and crucial to having a successful board. And I know I am willing to commit to this district and put the work in to meet the needs of all kids. I wanna be part of that community, I want to bring in everybody and make sure we are working and going forward so that we can improve the things we can. We can get those teachers some more competitive pay, we can make sure our students aren't continuing to have that COVID fallout and we're just making, continuing to make growth. So yeah, thank you again for coming. I feel like I've said everything else I had written out in my closing before this, I won't repeat myself, but thank you guys.
Yeah, I feel like I've said quite a bit as well. Thank you all for being here again and thank you to anybody who has volunteered to help and my family for volunteering and allowing me to give the time that I have. Just wanna throw out that, you know, it really does take a lot of teamwork behind the board members as well, and so I thank you all for that. In terms of the future of Rockwood, I mentioned this during the League Women Voters Forum as well, I am kind of a long-term commitment-type person. Once I do commit to something, I wanna see it through. What I wanna see is that we are sending our grandchildren to Rockwood Schools and that they have continued to thrive and so that we made decisions now that allowed Rockwood to continue to be as strong as it has been for, I don't even know like how many decades, I can't even do the math right now. So I just wanted you all to know that, like I know sometimes, you know, it's hard to get board members to commit long-term and, because it is a lot of work behind the scenes. But I am really committed to this role. My work has been fantastic with allowing me to take personal time to go to events and leave early for meetings. So I just really feel like this is a strong board, it's a strong school district and I wanna see it be that way so that my grandkids can go to school here too.
Thank you all again for coming and have a good night.